Meeting of the mayors and board of all the elected staff, 20 points back, and you'll join me in prayer and gladness.
Heavenly Father, we come to you again today, just thank you so much for the blessings, Father, for the, for your mercy and grace. Father, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to exercise our rights, a free country, to get out the boat and have elected new officials, Father, will guide us, Father, from July 1st through the next four years.
That we afforded that opportunity, we ask that you'll guide us in the decisions we make for the citizens that we represent, Father, and we ask that you'll just give us the wisdom to make the right choice. We ask that you'll bless all of our employees, watch over and protect them, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Praise Jesus to the light, the United States of America, and to the glory of His saints, the glory of His nations, on our God, and the visible, the liberty, and justice for all.
Hi, welcome everybody, roll call, Patrick.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
Donald.
Eric.
Mike.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Angie. And Alderman, Bernie Parker is out sick, and he will not be able to attend with us tonight, so, again, welcome everybody here. We've got two public hearings, the first one is at 398 East Old Pass Road, it's assessed to Jeanette Washburn and Philip McCausco.
All right, nobody.
I need to read the report, I'll need to read the report.
You don't need to read.
I do, all right. Notice of hearing was posted on subject property of 398 East Old Pass Road in Long Beach, Mississippi on March 13th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dell Stogner, and mailed to Jeanette Washburn and Philip Macaluso at 398 East Old Pass Road, Long Beach, Mississippi. Notice was delivered March 18th, 2025.
It's much better than I did.
I'm just making a motion to spread the report.
We've got a motion, a second to spread the reports, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is anybody here in the audience to speak for or against this cause of this hearing? All right, seeing none, entertain.
Uh, motion to close?
Motion to close, we have a second, got a second to close, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
He's parking his truck there, which is against the ordinance. He now has a trailer where he's bringing home the cut limbs, he's not putting it out by the road any longer. Front yard is torn up because there's not a driveway, but I don't see a major issue with it, other than we have a complaint on hand that it is flooding a neighbor. So, I guess, I mean, I will offer a motion, and anybody else can either deny it, or whatever, that we go ahead and we adjudicate it, but with the asterisk of having Mike go out there and work with the gentleman on, hey, look, you don't have a business license, one. Two, you know, it's against the ordinance of the truck being in the property there. I know in the past, he has left out the limbs, expecting the city or the, the, the.
County.
The county to pick, pick it up, which I know, I drive by there daily, and I don't, I don't see that any longer. The logs that you see in the picture there have been cut into chairs.
Artwork?
Yeah, basically, so, you know, again, I don't know what that, what the extent of that is, so, I basically, my motion is, is that to have, is to adjudicate, so that we can close the hearing and move on from it, but give Mike the leeway to work with him.
And I will say this, though, just recently, that this has been cleaned up, and so, so it, they do need to go out there and, and do something.
I need to give them one second before we have, all right, now we continue with our discussion, thank y'all.
So, it is a habitual mess, and continual, so.
And I would like to add the caveat of we have some kind of a timeframe for him to meet these standards that Donald is talking about. You know, certainly the water that may be draining on someone else's property, we cannot allow that.
Yeah, and it's, I believe it's because of ruts and that in the yard.
Little limestone would help that out.
Yes, sir.
Thirty days?
Uh, yeah, I would say thirty days.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion for thirty days.
And you amend your second, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have 304 East Old Pass Road, assessed to 304 Old Pass Road LLC, motion.
Motion.
Spread, you got a motion, second to spread. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have 304 East Old Pass Road, assessed to 304 Old Pass Road LLC, motion.
Motion.
Spread, you got a motion, second to spread. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Notice of hearing was posted on subject property 304 East Old Pass Road in Long Beach, Mississippi on March 13th, 2025 by zoning enforcement officer Dell Stogner, and mailed to 304 Old Pass Road LLC at 409 Gates Avenue in Long Beach, Mississippi. Notice was returned on March 24th, 2025.
All right, we have anybody here in the audience for or against the stated question? Hearing none, entertain. Got a motion, second to close the public hearing, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, entertain, a motion, a second to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in the pictures, it looks like it's been cut, so, I don't see a problem with it now, because it's a three-foot chain-link fence that, that it's cut down to. In the pictures, you can actually see a vehicle around the corner there, dri- driving up to the stop sign beforehand, you couldn't. I'll make a motion that it's.
In compliance?
In compliance.
Second, got a couple, motion in a couple seconds, says in compliance, no, no action needed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Donald, no action needed?
No, I think it's in compliance and.
That's no action needed, okay, we got any more discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we'll move on to public, to public comments, do we have any public comments? No public comments tonight, I have two proclamations under our announcements, presentations, proclamations, I might ask Mr. Jimmy Johnson if he'll come to front? And join me out here. Okay, this is, can y'all hear me? Good? Okay.
George.
All right.
Kenny.
Oh, you need to be.
Either you want me to use the mic? I'm so sorry. Let me put this over here and see if, see if this mic will pick us up, are you getting this now? Okay, this is a City of Long Beach, Mississippi, Office of Mayor Certificate of Proclamation. It's, it's, I'm gonna say before I start reading this proclamation, it's my honor to be able to stand here and read this proclamation for Jimmy. Jimmy Dale, you, you known as Jimmy to all of us, and Mike, he said, who's Jimmy Dale?
My only thing that, when my mother called me.
Now, therefore, I, George L. Bass, Mayor of the City of Long Beach, Mississippi, in recognition of Jimmy Dale Johnson, do hereby proclaim April 6th, 2025, as Jimmy Dale Johnson Day in the City of Long Beach, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and honoring his contributions. So, you're not in trouble when I say Jimmy Dale?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
I was just telling Jimmy, I don't know anybody that I've been associated with in my adult life, that really worked with the youth, been there for the youth, done things for our youth, and not only our youth that we talked about at sports events, but I, I know I saw Dr. Taya come in a while ago, and I, she's back here, our school superintendent, but she could testify also to the work he does with the schools, with the, you know, the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools, so, very, a very rich in giving person, and he displays what we need to look to as far as a servant to the city and citizens.
Thank you so much.
All right, I've got one more, I've got several young ladies here that we really want to recognize, but first, I'm gonna have, I want, I want the, the coaches to come forward. Their achievement that they have is not done on its own, it's because of those who go in day in, day in and day out, and inspire these, these young ladies, and gentlemen. So, I want to make sure that I, that I recognize this, we've got a young man here who has participated in here, and, and I think it says it in here, but it's, it's also, you know, unaware, I was totally unaware.
That we had a guy?
No, not that you had a guy, I've seen him, I've watched him.
But that he was so good.
Well, not only that, I knew he was good, I watched him, but that there was a different series, that if you had a male cheerleader versus an all cheer, uh, female cheerleading group, that you participated in different stages along the way. So, I've got Ms. Brandy Zink, assistant coach, as the head coach, assistant coaches are Brandy Clay and Abigail Fisher, I'm so happy to have y'all here, it's a pleasure to have y'all to be a part of this, now, young ladies, what I want you to do is come up and introduce yourself, let us know what grade you're in.
That sounds fun.
Huh?
That sounds fun.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I know, look, let me, let me say this, I've heard y'all cheer, y'all have all got loud voices, so, so, so come on up, and one at a time, come through, I'm gonna give you all the, the microphone, and let you introduce yourself, turn and face the audience here, and really, over here on my right, you'll see a camera, look at it and smile and wave to them, those are people that are at home. All right, buddy. But there are people at home that we're also having this in, so, you know, just be able to see this and enjoy this, so, your name and your grade.
My name's Abby Wadmeyer, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Brooke Daniels, and I'm in twelfth grade.
I'm General Court, and I'm in twelfth grade.
Y'all come on over here once you get this, Daniel, I hear, we're gonna find out, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm Ava Adcock, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Asher Gates, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Madison Daniels, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Stella Jackson, I'm in twelfth grade.
I'm Gabby Hurst, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Ali Packer, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Josie Hunt, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm Berkeley Cox, and I'm in tenth grade.
All right, girls, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and this, this has to do, you know, I mentioned the coaches and the dedication they have to y'all, and that's great, but it's your dedication that brings you to why you're here tonight, and why we're reading this. This is City of Long Beach, again, Mississippi's Office of the Mayor Certificate of Proclamation, whereas the 2024-2025 Long Beach High School Bearcats Cheerleaders were led by head, head coach Brandy Zink, and assistant coaches Brandy Clay and Abigail Fisher. The cheerleaders participating in the National High School Cheerleading Championship were, and as they introduced themselves, the road to competing at the National High School Cheerleading Championship was not an easy one for the Bearcat Cheerleaders, but they proved they were up for the challenge, and I really liked that, y'all didn't give up, y'all kept, just kept pushing forward, and that, that's great, to know that we've got y'all here representing, you know, not only the school, but you're representing the entire city. In order to give the mayor cheerleader a chance to compete, the Bearcat Cheerleaders had to change divisions, giving them only two chances to secure a bid, and the first opportunity came at the Baton Rouge Regionals, where they placed fourth, but they did not secure a bid for the Nationals, and the second and last chance to earn a bid was a month later at Magnolia Regionals, where the team earned first place, that's dedication, and they got the bid for the Nationals, and on February 9th, the Bearcat Cheerleaders stepped onto the mat at the National Championship for the first time since 2018, and only the second time in school history, and their performance was strong enough to advance them to the final four in the traditional performance division, and on February 10th, the Cheerleaders returned to the mat for the finals and performed their routine better than, than the day before, when the results were announced, the Long Beach High School Bearcat Cheerleaders had placed fifth in the nation, and. Whereas the mayor and board of Alderman would like to extend their sincere congratulations to each member of the 2024-2025 Long Beach High School Bearcat Cheerleaders that participated in the National High School, High School Cheerleading Championship, we appreciate the team effort, the determination, the passion, desire to win, and it has made them winners for themselves and for the Long Beach High School and the city. We applaud them for this honor, and now, therefore, I, George L. Bass, Mayor of the City of Long Beach, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 4th, 2025, as Long Beach High School Bearcat, Bearcat Cheerleader Day in the City of Long Beach, Mississippi, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this day and support the efforts of these cheerleaders in future events, activities, endeavors, and the future of the new, new light, so, thank y'all so much for what y'all done. I, I don't know, I don't know that y'all realize what a privilege it is for, for us as a board and a mayor to be able to come together, y'all know how to do this, girls, so. I'm waiting for the room to clear, and we'll move forward here in a second. All right, moving forward, amendments to municipal docket, I have one, I would like to add school board number applications and advertisement for position, I would like to put it under new business item number twelve, entertain motion.
Second.
Your motion, second to move forward with advertisement, can you set us a schedule on that, do you have a schedule that we could figure out if we advertise, we approve advertisements tonight, when will we do?
I don't know, because there's so many days it has to stay open, and I'm not sure what it is off the top of my head.
We need to stop, he needs to recount.
That's right, I'm sorry. Patrick, you're gonna get another job, buddy. All right, let the record show that Mr. Patrick Bennett has left the room, since we're dealing with a school board situation, he cannot be involved, so now we could have our, our discussion, we've got the motion, a second.
But what I'll do is I can go ahead and get the advertisement worked up, and then let y'all know, send you a copy of it, so y'all know what the dates and stuff are, if you want to just go ahead and authorize the advertisement, we'll do it as soon as possible.
So, we can't use the existing, I call it the existing list?
That would be a council question, no, we have to start over.
Do advertisements.
I thought we asked that question at the interviews, and we were told we had to do it over.
I probably wasn't paying attention.
Y'all could decide you don't wanna do it.
I just.
But we have to advertise.
Got to advertise it.
Okay.
I just, one motion, just due to the fact that we had a, sorry, drawn a blank, some confusion last time, just make sure that it's advertised on the internet as well.
Right, yeah, and Hunter's doing that for us also.
Just wanted to make sure we had it.
Okay.
This is just added to the agenda.
Yep.
My discussion on Valentine, number six, is the same as number ten, so just, I'll move it down to ten.
Number six is the same as.
It's number ten, so I'll just do it on number ten.
Okay. Six to ten, so I'm gonna just remove.
Six.
Six. All right, I got a motion, a second to add school board advertisements for application, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that will be number eleven. All right, Patrick's back with us, all right, next, approval amendments, the mayor and board of Alderman, the March 19th, 2025, regular, motion, second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next we have planning and development commission, March 27th, 2025, regular, motion, second, discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next, need to approve docket of claims number 040225, a motion, second for discussion and approval.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, discussion, the number's wrong on the docket of claim.
Well, when she originally started the docket, it was because that was the scheduled meeting day, and we were assessed at the second.
So, the, the number on the agenda is correct?
Um, actually, with the number on the docket, it's the actual number on the docket, so, it'd be 04.
0125.
Yeah, 042. Okay, any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and next we have unfinished business, donated leave request, this is for one of our police officers.
Motion.
Got a motion, second, discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, last, at the last meeting, this, this topic was brought up, and I was asked to look into a combination of our employee manual and the civil service rules with respect to the request to accept donated leave from Mr. David Butler, it is, it is permissible, it's been done in the past, but in fact, I think as we discussed last time, she will be required to exhaust her own sick leave and personal leave before she can accept any donated leave.
So, not knowing if she's expended that already, can we take, take action tonight to approve that, once it's, has been?
You can approve it, subject to, to those conditions, contingent upon her exhausting her own, she can then use the donated leave, but not until. And, Mr. Mayor, this has gone back to the civil service board, too, that they've signed off.
Yeah, they've signed off.
So, they will monitor, and chief will monitor all that, correct?
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you, council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all right, under new business, special event application fee waivers request, First Baptist Church, the Spring Festival, motion and second.
Motion.
Approval, discussion and approval, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, should we put on there, because usually they ask to put, uh, banners up as well? Can we?
They did that at the last meeting.
Okay, we got that. All right. Just want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of everything at once.
Yep. Yep, they've, they've done that already, so...
I'm good, man.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have special, special event application, uh, Monica Mall, the farmers market at Long Beach, and motion, second, discussion and approval. Uh, discussion.
Um, do we have something in there that if we have, like, an event or some, didn't we do that? Should that be on the special, uh...
Get that to the other ones.
If it contradicts with...
Any special requirements or conditions? I know we did with the...
We did it with the Sunday one.
The Sunday, that if we have an event and we have, uh, whatever, however many days to give them notice?
To bump them.
To, yeah.
Yeah, you know, Patrick, I don't see where that's...
We can add that. If you look on the very last page, it says any special requirements or conditions.
Okay, so it's all on the school's property?
Yeah, I, I think we should add that in there.
Yep.
All right, what kind, how you want to do?
It's, it's all on the school's property, though. It's all on the school's property, so it wouldn't be any of our festivals. Courtney, same.
So, it's all school property? It's not going to be our, our festivals? So, we won't be utilizing that property anytime for any of our festivals?
Technically, it's on school property. It's not on the, it's on school property, not the city property. And we did this just as paperwork for us to have on file. So, they get permission from the school already every year.
I think, I think our concern is if we, you know, we've had, uh, talks and, talks, trucks and tacos.
Jeep in the Coast. I mean, that's all we've been...
Jeep in the Coast, where they've utilized those areas, and, and I don't want to be a conflict. Bob, you got to comment on this?
We've never had an issue with them, uh, when we keep them, them informed of what's coming. They're very gracious. They know. We've worked it out in the past.
Okay.
Either the group that's coming in will communicate with them and, uh, encourage them to be involved with that, uh, event that we have on the weekend, or they'll move over to either the property next door, or, you know, they'll find another place. But we've never had an issue with them. Uh, they've been very gracious, moving if they have to.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good, then. I mean, that's...
Okay. All right, uh, any more discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have special event application, Long Beach Main Street, the Long Beach Ball Drop. I need a, uh, motion and second for discussion and approval. You got motion and second, discussion?
Courtney, would you reach out to the, some civic organizations and stuff? And I know, because I think our life team does a New Year's dance that night also for a fundraiser. Could, maybe we could reach out to civic organizations to try to get them involved? Because, I mean, this go kinda take away from them.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware, but yeah, definitely.
Yeah, they do that, and, uh, it's, uh, started, chief, two years ago?
St. Thomas.
Yes, yes. So...
Is it your suggestion that this gets tabled, then?
No, I think we go ahead. I mean, this is just event applications. I think we go ahead.
Application, so she can move forward her...
I mean, it's through Main Street, so she could, yeah, she's, she could move forward her work, and then we could, she could coordinate with these others. And, and we, you know, we talked about it up here, also, uh, request that we drop a radish.
Okay. I've had a lot of people say that. I just wasn't sure.
Yes. They do an oyster in Bay St. Louis. I don't know what they do in Ocean Springs and Biloxi.
They do one in Biloxi?
I think so.
Okay.
I know they do one in Ocean Springs. They do one in Bay St. Louis.
Yeah.
It's either radish or speckle trout. Let's go with the radish.
Radish, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution requesting Harrison County assistance for striping parking lot. Uh, this is at the senior rec facility. Uh, motion and second, discussion and approval. Uh, discussion. Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We need a real policy.
Yeah. Any opposed? Uh, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank y'all. Uh, next, we have, uh, authorize, authorize advertisement for RFP for disaster preposition ca, uh, contracts near Forum. Uh, we extended it last year. By contract, we could extend it. It expires this year, and we need to go ahead and move forward before hurricane season gets here and move forward with that. So, I need a motion and second, discussion and approval.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Uh, we gonna, we did a, a subcommittee last time. Are we gonna keep that, or do we need to re-vote on that?
On a subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
Who was on, who was on the subcommittee?
Me, Timmy.
I was, yes.
Joe, I think.
Yeah, that's Joe and Dave.
And Griff.
Okay, I, I look, I, I would like to keep the same subcommittee.
Okay. No, I just wanted to...
If that's all right with y'all.
I have no problem. I just wanted to discuss that upfront.
All we gotta do is get new contracts. Something we, you know, all of y'all that's been involved in that discussion, I feel like should still be here on it.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, any more discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number six will be moved down to number ten, so I'd ask, uh, to remove that number six from the agenda. It's the Valentine drainage easements. So, we'll move that and take it up under number ten. Uh, number seven is communications discussion. Alderman McCaffrey.
Yes, we, um, we have so many projects going on around Long Beach. I feel like we're, have a slight hit government communication whenever some of these projects come to a pause. I got a call the other day about the railroad projects coming to an end. I had no idea what they were talking about. I reached out to Angie and Bernie. They didn't know about it. These people saw it on the news. And, uh, we need, we just need to be aware so we can have information to give back to the residents when they call.
All right, well, we put it out on our site, too, but we'll make sure. I guess, I guess the lack of communication you're talking about is from us to the Alderman.
Let, let, let that way we can get a call.
Yeah, we usually send out, uh, through email, uh, the information, so we may have slipped on that one. Uh, that was, uh, three of the, uh, putting out fire days.
Oh, I know that was, and there's a lot of projects that were on, too.
It was intense, intense for three days. So, uh, you know, I'll take the blame for that, but we'll make sure that we do get that communication out to you as board members. And I know you, y'all need to be aware for when you get called by your constituents. So, I'll make sure that we make that happen. Anything else on that, Tim?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, buddy. Uh, next, we have a contract, a contract spotlight for the senior, uh, senior center.
Motion, second.
Uh, discussion. Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is, uh, the, a contract spotlight for public works.
Motion, second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have the ratified Valentine Drive survey. Uh, this was approved by, by email request of Alderman. Uh, this is a survey to survey the property lines on Valentine, those homes that are involved. Uh, uh, Mike's not here tonight to give us told. David, do you have a number of homes that'll be involved with this survey?
I, I wanna say it was around eight or so on the east side of the road, on the north half.
From, from Olpass South?
Correct.
About eight homes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick, well, do, we already have a motion because it was, we're ratifying, correct?
Yeah.
Is this just the, I have a, I have an issue with this, and, and here's why. At the end of the day, I know we need to know where our property, where our easement is. But when we had all the neighbors come in at the last meeting, you know, basically putting it on us, this is how I bought the property, whether you bought the property and your, the fence that, that was on the property beforehand was over the property line, your shed, we've gone through this before. It, that's not on the city. When you, when you buy a piece of property, whether that fence is up there or not, your due diligence is on you. And I, I hate to be very direct about it, but I don't think we, as a city, should be surveying people's properties for them unless, unless we don't know where our easement is.
That's the issue.
And, and, and that's the case here. But I wanted to say that because I didn't say that the other night, you know? So, we should only be surveying the back end of the property, not the front ends. Am I correct?
We'll have to go from the front to the back to get the pro, right back property line, because it's gonna be off the road, I'm sure.
Right.
I, I'm not sure if it's gonna come off of, off of...
And, and am I making sense, or am I just...
No, you're making sense, because we ran into this already.
We need to survey both sides. Can we survey the, the, the western side of the backyard easement? And then we could take a twenty-foot tape and measure to the other side off of survey stakes. The purpose of doing this is they've spoken, they have spoken about trees, and we've been looking at the trees in there. There's a lot of popcorn trees involved, which are invasive.
I understand.
And we're trying to get those removed everywhere we can on city property. But also, there's some other trees, and we're trying to, to, to locate those. But also, within that route, there may be a way that we don't have to disturb those trees and continue with our drainage through there to make it work, to be able to drain. I think the last lady to the south has water stands in her yard.
Yes.
Well, and I, I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I understand and agree with what you're saying. Why do we have to?
So, a, am I correct in assuming the surveys belong to the city and not the property owners?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good.
Yeah, they, they will be our surveys for our public works.
I may, Mayor, to maybe help Mr. Fraser, the, the, what the city did and the purpose for, of what they did is for the surveyor to delineate between the city property and private property, not to benefit or to identify private property. It was actually to distinguish city from...
And that makes total sense now, and that, that answers my question.
Here's where that bright line is, so it necessarily...
We, we have to have it to make sure we stay on our property.
Sure.
We don't want to go down that...
We can't get out of the easement.
I understand. So, that...
Don't want to take down a water road that's, that's not in the easement.
Uh, before we conclude this discussion, I think I was watching David's face, and it appeared that you had some input that you wanted to...
No, sir. I just was being prepared to answer. If y'all were looking to me, I, I think all that, what I was, thought y'all might need got resolved.
And then my, my other thing is, I need communication to be able to tell them what, where we are, when the survey is gonna be going on, to give them a heads up. So, I need to know in order to communicate with, with the residents, if, if we can get on the same page with that.
Well, then I would offer that, as the mayor said earlier, I dropped a ball, because I think they may have done the survey today.
Did they do it today? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because this was already ratified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we did approve it, and we're ratifying it, so, okay. Just in the future.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sorry about that, Angie. I, I, you know, I, I want to, I want those homeowners there to know exactly what we're doing and when we're gonna do it. We will, when we get ready to do work over there, we will be in touch with those folks a couple days in advance to let them know when we'll begin work and to the extent of where we'll be working within that, that easement.
Make sure I'm included.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make sure that y'all, y'all are aware. We'll, we'll email all the Alderman and you directly to let you know. So, all right, any more discussion?
Exactly, exactly.
Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, ratified Jeep in the Coast additional day request and motion, second, discussion and approval.
Okay.
Uh, discussion. We've added a, a Wednesday night with a band that will have the bandstand set up, and it will be able to remain there, uh, throughout the, the Jeepin' event. And, uh, so it's bringing another night of celebration and tourists enter our city and, and revenue, yes, of course. Uh, so, uh, any further discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, number twelve.
Twelve.
Will be, uh, advertisement for school board member. A motion, second, for discussion and approval.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick, look, get a job, Patrick. Uh, that is my fault. I, I apologize for that. Uh...
Still have a motion.
But I still have, I have a motion and a second to advertise. Uh, do we have any discussion?
Just have Kenny will give us the dates and everything?
I will, once I get one.
And you know them to us and everything?
Yeah, once she gets on the cowl and she'll work it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hear and non, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm out of time, I'm out.
Patrick, between you and I, we both gotta recognize that quicker.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, department business, mayor's office. Y'all bear with me through this. I've got another, a number of things I need to talk about. Uh, I have spent some time with David this week, and we've been talking about, uh, the phase two and phase three sidewalk on Pumble Road. Uh, I think it's phase two. We're dealing with, I think, what was it? Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen?
Nineteen, I believe.
Nineteen, maybe, properties that we're gonna have to purchase. And we're working through the, the person that we hired as a board to, to do that, uh, the, the, to make purchase agreements on it. And that's still gonna take a little while longer. Uh, because not only we, he has to get it to us, but we've also get, gotta get it to M-Dot.
Right. Right.
To get their approval on it. So, uh, just a basic up, uh, update on that. But phase three, I think we're down to, what, two or three?
I, I think only three on that, on that project.
That will need to be purchased by us. And I've asked David to go ahead and see if we can move forward those three as quick as possible, so we can begin that construction on that phase of sidewalk while the other phase, uh, phase two is being purchased out for us to be able to do that. Uh, so, yeah, I just want y'all to know that's gonna be coming up. And we're gonna try to do that as quick as possible to get that going. Uh...
Wait, this money comes out of roads and bridges? What does this come out of?
Pardon me?
This money is a part of the grant?
This is the, this is the grant we got from GRPC.
Okay.
Both, both of those.
But the max comes where?
From roads and bridges.
Roads and bridges match, yes. Roads and bridges, in this case sidewalks.
Right.
So, uh, and these are much needed, I'll tell you. They need it all over the place.
Y'all drive, too. Y'all drive on the sidewalk.
Yeah. Uh, next, I want to discuss the intersection at Railroad and White Harbor. Don and I have been talking about this, and I visit, and Courtney and I visited with David, uh, to have them investigate the width of the easement we have from, from on the, the north side of CSX to our north side of Railroad Street, to look and see if there's any possibility of adding storage lanes for turn lanes going east and west there. That is a big area that stops up. I know in my years at Fire Department, I know Mikey's years at Fire Department, we've had calls where we've been stopped there because of the traffic that's backed up waiting for a train to go through, where we needed to go straight to the east or straight to the west. And, and then it's, it's truly an inconvenience there. Uh, we could, we, there may be an opportunity there for us to do that. We've got funding for another intersection, uh, that we got through, uh, GRPC, uh, with the same type of match, that is not enough funding to do. It was at Twenty-Eighth Street and Beetline Road. It would take, uh, well, I think it's two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars that we had for that. It would probably take a little over a million dollars to do what needs to be done because of utilities that are in that area. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go back to GRPC. If we can find that we have enough area there to do it right away and move that funding source back over to Railroad, and we feel like for two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, if we have a right of way, we could put that in there. And, uh, you know, uh, the, the, the new, new schedule, uh, on, on doing the work, uh, on the Railroad, they're gonna be moving down Startin Lane, I think, on April the seventh, and they're gonna, these are just railroad crossings that comes with paving only. White Harbor will be, will be one of those crossings. So, once they get through that, and we can find out if we do have enough right of way, we could possibly go ahead and move forward getting that action happening. Uh...
So, White Harbor is not one that they're going to raise the road?
Yes.
They are.
Yes, they are. It is raised. It will affect the incline on both sides and then out on to, uh...
He's saying, asking, in fact, we could go in wide.
Yeah, no, but I missed, I misunderstood what you just said.
Yeah, yeah. They'll, they'll be doing the same thing they're doing to all the rest of them. Uh, all right, uh, next, we have Casting Point and Fa...
Need a motion on that?
I, I'm gonna ask for a motion and second, discuss, uh, the phase six of Casting Point for a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant the, uh, Beetline, uh, Railroad.
Oh, from Beetline Railroad? I don't know that I need a motion and second for, because all we're doing is investigation. Once we get that, then, uh, with Donald, we can...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we got what we needed.
The first thing we gotta do is get, make sure we got enough room. The first thing we got to do is get, make sure we got enough room there.
Yep.
And that we could do it. Yeah, well, the funding should, would be there, because I, we could get it rotated over like we did for the Cleveland and Klondike intersection. All right, now, this one, I am going to ask for a motion second since the Castine Point Phase Six. I want a motion second of discussion and possible approval.
Second.
All right, discussion. We have been in discussion with the Castine Point folks. We've been, you know, with our engineers. We've spent some time out there. There's a wrinkle on the road of the asphalt on the south side of the road that comes in off of Klondike, and I cannot remember the name of the road now.
Addison.
Is it Addison? Yes. And it's where they've got the island there also. There was some drainage that went into the drainage ditch on Klondike that was higher than the road, so they, that needs to be fixed. The wrinkle needs to be fixed. And one thing that, that I feel like needs to be fixed, and all you got to do is go out there and look at it, where trucks turning in or out onto Klondike Road have gone up on the center island there. And it needs to be moved back and shortened. That needs to be done. Now, we could approve it, and then we'll go out there as a city and have to do that when people complain about it. Or we just try to fill it up, build up enough pavement around it, make it a rollover curve. There's, those, those are the things. Now, there's some, you know, the, the lift station, there's some stuff in there that wear down. And we're two and a half, almost three years into this being completed and put in operation, especially the lift station. And it's got small things that you have to do to it. And it's going to be a constant maintenance on our lift stations, just like we do now. And I don't, David, am I missing something?
No, sir. I think you've covered it. We've got a warranty punch list with some items that haven't been completed, and, and some of them are, are the things you've talked about right now.
Okay. So, we've got this, and, and I, I, you know, I'm at a point where, you know, the Castine folks are ready to start moving with their commercial development on the north side. And, you know, I, I'd really like to get this cleared up. And I don't know how y'all want to proceed with it, but we do have, as, as, you know, David said, we do have a punch list there. And I don't think any of the items are real big besides that, the patch on the pavement and, and, and the curb that we may, you know, we may end up living with. Like I say, just fill in the, the, the east end of it with concrete and use as a rollover curve.
Without, the other issue there is the, on the back of Crawford, that drainage. I know they're working with their contractor on the bill.
It runs, runs east and west?
The, behind Crawford, where they filled in, where we, where we piped and they filled in.
And then directly to the east, that has been cut and cleaned.
Okay, so the, the west side has, but have we finalized, has Mike signed off on the back of Crawford for those people to put in their fences?
I, I don't know that.
That, that is a, that's a, that's a big one there that we got to make sure that they handle.
Yeah.
That was our agreement when signing off on, what is it? Two, what, three, four, and five with them, so.
Well.
I know that we're working, trying to work out something with their contractor, and that's not our business.
Not us.
But we still need to make sure that we, we have resolution.
When we take ownership, we need to.
Because it doesn't need to be us going in there.
We don't need to be doing that. So, I guess.
I'm just curious. You, did I understand you correctly to say you would reduce the size of that island, make it shorter?
Uh-huh.
Did the Castine Point people express an opinion as to aesthetically how they felt? No?
Well, what you're having is if you look here, as a truck comes in, you can see.
Yeah, you're hitting the edge right here.
Right. And I think, Mayor, if you're talking, you're talking about moving it back from Klondike.
Best.
About ten to fifteen feet. I think that, I think that, it's so long, I think moving it back is not going to hurt it at all.
Pete, I'll give you a couple of examples where we faced this already. Penny Lane. It went out there close to the road, and it had to be moved back.
Yeah.
Same thing with the east end and west end of Johnson Road off of Beetline going Espy.
Yep.
The one on the east end has been moved back three times, maybe four times, to allow those trucks to make that turn to get in there or coming out. And then the one on the west end, I think it's been moved back two or three times.
Well, my opinion, for what it's worth, is go ahead and move it and do it right the first time, so we don't have to come back and do it again.
David and I, you know, we talked about this, and I, I'd like to add something into our subdivision ordinance that says it's got to be X number of feet away from the intersection to prevent this in the future. You know, it's fine and dandy.
Is it in there?
I must say it's in a regular ordinance, too, isn't it?
The particular island has already been moved back once. Initially, they brought it all the way to Klondike.
Okay.
And, um, I asked them, I threw the help of Joe and David, I asked them to move it back. But there, there's already a setback. I don't remember if it's twenty or twenty-five feet, but it's in.
It may not be enough.
Whatever it is, if it, if that's meeting the regulations right now, we need to increase the depth of that setback.
Yeah.
And, you know, and we're, we're well aware of that. And we could direct, we could discuss that at the next meeting on what we come up with.
Beverage trucks that are hitting it, building, building materials and stuff.
That's what it's.
I travel that every morning. Sometimes the school buses will go.
I say the school buses are in there, garbage trucks are in there. It's not, you know, boats, trailer, trucks with boats and trailers, you know, going through there.
Mayor, I guess we better see what the ordinance says and then measure it and see where we're at.
Right. And I, and that's a separate issue that I like for us to, to bring up of, of working within that ordinance or changing that ordinance. But I guess what I'm asking for is direction on how y'all want to handle this, because we really need to get these things straightened out before we do a closeout.
All right, you mentioned things are under warranty, and then things are not. So, how much is this, I mean, how much are we going to be out? What is under warranty? I mean, we need to figure out that, those costs, don't we?
I, I don't think that some things are. I think what he's saying, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mayor, that the time is ticking on their two-year warranty. Am I correct?
Right, sorry.
So, and what he's saying is, before the warranty is out, and David, you correct me if I'm wrong, we need these corrected, or it will be on us.
Right, but I thought there were also some things that he mentioned that we were going to incur anyway.
What, what I'm saying is, there's two lift stations involved here in Phase Six. And we will have breakdowns in those, but it's not great big costly items. It's small items, and I forgot what they were, David. You might be able to help me on small items that are in there.
Yeah, just very minor. You know, pressure gauge. But pressure, those are normal maintenance items that go out on every pump station.
Yeah, it's, it's minor stuff, and they were already doing some of that already. If, if we had done and accepted it a year ago, we would probably have already replaced some pressure gauges and maybe some switches, pressure switches.
From the street?
So, you know, it's.
Do you have all these items we discussed on the punch list?
That's twenty.
I believe so.
The, the.
I mean, I definitely have the list. I, yeah, I've got, I actually got it with me.
The island and everything?
Uh, the island was not on the punch list because it was, it was built.
It was, it was built.
Per design, it's not really.
I think we need to get everything else out, just as long as they complete the punch list. I think what you're wanting is a number and a design on that island.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we need to improve what we've got in our ordinance.
The residence up, that's up to the developer at this point still.
Yeah, yeah, and I think.
Until he's in the punch list.
I think if we could clear that out, get them to take care of these few items here, I will get with David tomorrow if it's the pleasure of the board, and we will work towards this, and I will place it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
Your motion.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
I need a substitute motion, substitute motion second.
Second.
To table until the next meeting.
Taping and get a design on the island and bring it back to the board.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next thing I have is, you know, we had in Castine Points before our subdivision ordinance was updated, and we have some ADA requirements there. It was brought to us, and I want to say it was Federal Highway Commission or somebody, I can't remember who it was, that brought it to our attention. Someone there had complained about the lack of ADA ramps. Well, we have addressed that, and I think, David, correct me if I'm wrong, next Thursday we'll receive RFQs to be able to move forward with the, with the correction of all those. And how many was it, fourteen?
I think there's nine crosswalks, which really equates to eighteen handed ramp ramps.
Eighteen, okay. So, we're moving forward with that. But one of the things that we discovered in, in our discussions between us, me and Courtney and Donald and, and David with Overstreet, is that we need a, a, a ADA coordinator. That's requirement. That's federal requirement. We got to have an ADA coordinator. Now, I've met, we've met, I've had, you know, legal in there with us. And what that, Courtney, do we have those forms? Did they get those forms, Courtney?
Yes. David, did you bring copies of them?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me, let me finish this out, and then I'll, I will explain everything. The ADA coordinator puts a committee together. That committee is, is, is of, of the Building Code Office. It's of the Public Works. It's of the engineering. It's of our community, Communications Division. It's of our legal counsel, and I think I'm missing somebody else. But it's all people who are employed by the city. And what that does is there's a form that you go on our site. If you see where we're needing sidewalk entrance for ADA requirements, they could fill that form out and send it to us. Now, there's some pre-existing prior to the ADA requirements and, and older sidewalks that, yes, it comes to our attention and we made aware of it, but also, we could, we don't have to immediately go out and fix that one. Under the ADA requirements, we're allowed to accumulate and get some funding and start fixing them one at a time. We don't have to immediately do that. The hope would be that we could have some money. I know we've got some sidewalk money that we collected before, but maybe if we get those in, we could go ahead and start addressing those. Maybe we can make a contract with a company that, in the future, that, you know, all we had to do was call them on a price, price per, and tell them how many we got, and let them go out and do its repairs. But it doesn't require you to go out and do this. And what it will also do is give us the ability to meet the federal requirements of ADA, and it will also give us the opportunity to have these, this committee through our coordinator review everything and make sure we are meeting the proper standards. So, I'm moving forward with setting that up, and I would, I would really like to entertain a motion second for discussion approval to move forward with setting this up.
I have discussion.
I need, let me get a motion second, Will.
Motion. Second.
You got a motion, second discussion.
So, we have to, I mean, we rely on our architects in their drawings to always give us.
Engi, engineering would.
Mayor's the ones that.
Right, engineering's are the ones.
Responsibility?
Yes, they do. Any new construction?
So, but we have to hire an individual? Is that what this is saying?
No, no, we're not hiring anybody.
They got to just get.
This is all in-house personnel.
Doing the correct requirements.
We're meeting requirements of the federal government by having an ADA coordinator and a committee, and they're all on payroll. And they will meet, when they get a form that's sent in to us, they will meet as a group and look at it and put it on, in. If it's, if it's the old sidewalks, they'll put it in. And, you know, we may have to gather up five or six to do it one time, to be able to, to entice a better price. But we're not required to go out, as I understand it, David, and we were talking to Grady the other day about this, that we're not required to go out and make that correction. But all of our new construction, it's required that we meet ADA requirements. All right, any more discussion on that? I know, Angie, you read and go ahead, hon, I'm not going to call for it to you.
Given to us, so, I mean, I'm. To me, this is the same as having a construction group.
Committee.
Committee going forward to help with any project.
Basically.
Yeah.
It basically is, but we've got to establish this to meet the ADA requirements.
So, let.
This would help prevent any delays.
Move forward with it, and you'll bring it back to us at the next meeting or two, and yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a, we could, we could ignore it, not do anything, and then we.
Meeting, you know what I'm saying?
Pardon me?
Actually, you could do it with, like at an apartment head meeting, have your meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's, that's nothing.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Actually, you know, they could meet and, and the coordinator come to us and say, this is what it is.
Exactly.
Help with going forward with all the construction projects.
Yeah. But anything going forward now is, will be ADA. That will be in the subdivision ordinance.
I think this is more of like, if there was something old.
Correct.
And they notice it, they're just bringing it to the attention of the city as the option to try to remediate it.
And the other side of that coin is, we're sending to the federal government that we have an ADA commit, coordinator and committee, and we're meeting their requirements, and we're not subject to any fines. Which is the big thing that we got to worry about, being subject to fines. All right, I, I have a, a motion second to allow us to move forward with this. We have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is, I don't know, I'm assuming y'all all saw the press release from the Police Department where Animal Control and the Police Department, the detectives were involved in investigation and arrest where nineteen dogs were in, in a, in a backyard. They, y'all did take all nineteen dogs. They were fighting. What kind of dogs?
Trained.
Trained dogs.
Trained for dog fighting.
But what, what breed of dog were they? Bulldog, pit bulls?
Pit bulls, and there was some shepherds.
Okay. So, these were all confiscated through, through the Police Department and our Animal Control Officer. One of the dilemmas we were facing yesterday throughout the, the day and the afternoon was the lack of facilities for us to hold them. The cost for the Humane Society, I think it started at two thousand dollars initial, plus, was it thirty dollars?
Dollars a day per dog.
Dollars a day per dog.
Thirty dollars a day for each animal. Now, there was five or six of these animals that were old enough and that were true fighting pit bulls.
Very aggressive.
That were extremely aggressive. One of our police officers, a detective, got attacked by one and bitten on his pants leg, but it didn't get to the skin, and it just got to pants before they get him away from him. So, these are very aggressive dogs, that apparently, this guy must be a good trainer. But those are at, because of them being vicious, they are at the Animal Control, and they're subject to being put down because they're untrainable, to untrain them, to take that out of their system. Now, our Animal Control Officer has been working today, and yesterday, he's had a number of kennels donated to the Police Department for them to be able to house these dogs. He's had months of food that's been donated, bedding that's been donated, any number of things that have been donated by our citizens here. And I can't say enough about how they turn out for this and will help us with this, because otherwise, it would have to come out of our budget. I'm informing you this because I want y'all to be aware of what our Police Department did, and especially our Animal Control Officer. So, they've been a great job, they're already adopting out some of the puppies that haven't been, began being trained yet, I think there was eight or ten of those that are being adopted out. And Courtney and I went by today for another update, and there was a couple there that had adopted one while we were there. And, you know, the puppies are, they just like a puppy. And it's great to see them go into good homes, and I just want to commend the Police Department and the Animal Control Officer for what they did, and to let y'all know that we've averted another cost, because Police Department, they do not have that in their budget to take care of anything like this. So, that's just FYI for you. Next thing is our change order number two on the Eastern Bulkhead. Are we ready to go forward with that, David? Now, y'all have, I know you, we had a discussion between you and Decor on this, and I think y'all have got it figured out to where we could move forward. This will be, this was still, and still is going to be a cost savings to us.
It does represent a cost saving. This change order actually was on the last agenda, and we just tabled it so we could have a little bit more time for some discussion with the contractor. We've done that. We feel comfortable recommending this. I've got copies I can hand out to you guys, but if y'all are interested in approving it tonight, we're ready for that.
And what it is, as we discussed at the last board meeting, was that the concrete that's been pulled out down there belongs to Ford, because that was in their contract, the disposal of the contract rip raft that they pulled out. And there was a certain grade of limestone that was supposed to be put in there. He can take and crush that concrete that meets the standard and requirements to go in down there and save us, I forget the amount of it from last board meeting, but Randall, do you remember what the savings were on that?
Roughly thirty dollars a cubic yard, all of it was concrete versus limestone.
Yeah, the bid price is $135 a cubic yard. He's offering to provide this material, which will perform actually a little bit better than what was in the contract for $100 a cubic yard.
No, and we're getting a better performance product. So, we're saving the $30 a ton? Are y'all ready?
Thirty-five dollars a cubic yard, yes, sir.
Okay.
Y'all are ready to move? Y'all need our approval, David?
We're ready, it's, like I said, it's the same document we had last time, and so there's no change from last time. It just, I don't think it got fully addressed on the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion.
I'll say, we can go ahead and make a motion and second to approve this.
You got your motion.
Got motion and second. Is there any more discussion on this?
That's money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's all for me, folks. Fire Department, we've got one lateral transfer, municipal court, we have new hire, and then in the library, we got a step increase, and I'll take these all as one on the...
Second.
Yeah, motion and second, discussion on any of these. Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, City Clerk, do we have anything?
No, sir.
All right, Fire Department Chief, we got anything? Okay. Police Department Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Engineer, we got change order for J.E. Boyes Incorporated, a southeast shoreline bulkhead.
That we had already...
Y'all had approved it, this just ratifies it and gets it in the record.
Right, that's what we...
Yeah, y'all were provided with this information last time. This is the actual official change order to go in the records.
Okay, so, we got a motion and second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we had Contract WC4 Truck Incorporated, inner bulkhead. I need a motion and second on this for discussion.
All right, discussion.
You want me to discuss?
What are we getting ready to do with that?
I am, but I want to clear this up first. We are waiting, and what I'm going to ask for a substitute motion when I get through, we're waiting for one or two more insurance documents and...
And some corrections on their bond performance and payment bond documents.
And they should have this by the beginning of next week. So, what I'm going to do when I get through the discussion here is I'm going to ask y'all for a substitute motion to give me an authority to go ahead and prove that and be ratified at the next meeting, so they can begin work over there.
That's my substitute.
All right, we got a substitute motion, and then we have a substitute second?
Yes, Angie.
Angie, okay, all right. Discussion on this, what this is, this is the inner bulkhead, this is going to be a newer inner bulkhead, it's going to be compatible with what's been going on on the outer bulkheads. Instead of having a wooden walkway inside this new, this new bulkhead will be buttressed from both directions, east and west, and then we'll get down and make some turns, it'll be a little what, to the north, east, to the southwest, and then it'll make another turn north and south. So, this will be a buttressed bulkhead, but it'll all be tied in with a concrete 10-foot walkway on the inner part of the harbor that will go in this part of construction from the harbor house all the way down to where it meets the southern quay. The southern quay will be another phase that we're hoping to be able to put it out here, maybe at the next board meeting. But this is moving forward. These items have to be done before we can begin construction on the inner piers. And we're working through right now with Decor, Randall Love, our project engineer down there, David Ball, we're working to establish taking out some Pier Two and a Pier Five, I think it is, and starting repairs on them once we get this inner wall done. So, things are slow, I'll give you that, but they take time. We have been working on the outer walls down there since, I think, where was it? When did we actually begin construction, David? Was it December or January? I know we had some test pile driving, but the actual construction started in December or January.
It's been taken for sure.
Yeah, we're here at the first of April, and they are finishing up, about to do some of the sidewalks that need to be poured, and we'll have those outer walls will be complete, the inner walls will start, and if we advertise and get out quick enough, we may be able to secure and start on the southern quay and tie in the others. So, I do have that motion, substitute motion and a second discussion from the board on this. Did I say enough?
I did. You did.
All right. No more discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have pavement markings for Pounder Road and Clower to Wall, a motion and second for discussion approval?
Second.
All right, this was a section that was poured, the paving was laid yesterday and today, and David, what was it, 30 days we got to wait for marking?
On, when you use thermoplastic stripe, you don't have to wait quite that much, you're more like 10 days to two weeks.
Okay, all right, so, and we're doing thermoplastic, we're the board selected to do that on all of our future paving. So, 10 days to two weeks, just to let the public know, we will be marking that section that's been redone. There'll be paving for information. And this is just for information, the markings too, I don't need a motion and second.
This is to award to Image Striping Company.
Is it awarded?
Yeah.
Yes.
I missed that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, while I'm talking about paving, they will be starting on, they've started on Lover's Lane today, doing leveling, and they will be back tomorrow to start doing paving. Pounder Road, Public Works is doing a great job over there, they're putting the piping in for the drainage that will allow us to come back and pave Middle Mitchell, yeah, here shortly, and Gates will be ready to pave here shortly. And that will go from Old Pass Road to Commission Road on Gates. So, we've got a motion and second to approve the image. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have the 2024-2025 paving plan, it's a list, it's been derived from our contract there through the county to be able to list the roads, and I think it's SMPDD that does this for us. And this is just for your information, to take it and look at it and be prepared at the next meeting to come up with a list that's workable. And David, you'll be prepared to give us an amount of funding that we might have?
Well, I would hope that perhaps tonight, if y'all are aware of your available budget, that would be very helpful for us to know what is the ceiling that y'all are wanting to spend on these roads. Otherwise, we'll just estimate every one of them, it just takes us some time.
I don't want to estimate everyone, I don't want y'all to do that, because it's going to take a long time for y'all to do that. I would rather the board take this, let them pick some roads, and then let's bring it back to the board and narrow it down, and then ask you to go back and estimate it then.
Okay.
But what we would like to know, I think that the board members might want to know, how much does it cost us for a foot to do a road?
Yes, we can provide that. It's obviously varies depending on...
And actually about possible lengths of road.
But we can get close. One thing I would offer too, there might appear to be a glaring omission, and to some extent it is, Railroad Street is not on this list. I know that we all want to do Railroad Street. We kind of held off because we weren't sure how long the CSX project was going to go. We can include that in the estimate too, whenever y'all decide.
I say we over a year from earlier.
Okay.
No, I think probably August, September, we'll, it'll be ready.
I'd say, when's our next check coming?
July.
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 I'd say we leave it off, then, that's our...
Yeah, I mean, we got already checks coming, y'all could...
Yeah, y'all.
Y'all.
So, we're budgeted, we receive a million dollars this budget year, but again, we needed to hold some of that back for matching funds.
We still in 24?
This is 24, 25 that we're looking at, we're in 24.
I think previously, we kind of said, we were going to hold 20% back for matches.
Eighty-twenty.
Yeah. What I would like to request that we look at doing right now is maybe looking, getting a cost to go ahead and do here on East Railroad, where the tracks cross over Railroad Street going into Lumber Yard, and go ahead and look at the cost on milling that back, and go ahead and doing that while we got the paving company here. And, you know, it won't be affected by any crossings, elevation crossings that we're trying to eliminate, but this would give us a smoother ride down there on, certainly on the east end of town on Railroad. So, I would like to entertain a motion and second, allow us to move forward with that, investigate it and come bring it back.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we get a price on it.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and bring it back for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, we've got a motion and second, any further discussion on 2024-2025 plan?
Can we get just a breakdown of like, how much money we have in the sales tax diversion money?
Yeah, I'll bring it in.
Yeah, we could, Kenny can email it out to y'all, so you'll go ahead and have it. So, all right, any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, David, have we got anything else that I've missed?
I can't remember anything.
I'm in a sad problem, if I can't remember, you can't either. All right, Public Works, Joe?
We're good.
Let's just let you guys know, they're doing a good job out there preparing for this paving, and the ditch is putting the pipes in.
I don't know where they get that topsoil, but that sure is very...
Came out of all y'all's ditches.
All right, Recreation, Bob, you've got a request that we, for donation of wrestling mats to Long Beach High School District, the school district?
We have acquired a set of wrestling mats back in 2011 or '10, somewhere in that timeframe. This was a dream of Bob Krantz, the late Bob Krantz. He had a passion for wrestling. He tried to get a program started here, it never really took traction. Those mats have been in our gym for, since that time. The high school is starting up a wrestling match in the fall. They've approached me, they know we have the mats, they've approached me and asked me if they could utilize them, and I think it would be a great addition to the high school program. The only stipulation I have is the Long Beach Police Department uses one of our mats for training. I would like to see if the school would either buy a mat specifically for the Police Department for the training, or coordinate with them so that they can utilize that mat that they presently have. The only other thing I have with Recreation is the upgrades to the playgrounds are 99% complete. I have one multipurpose swing that I'm waiting for a safety seatbelt before I can install it. Other than that, we are 100%. I will be touching up with the safety surfacing at the parks, but it's 99% complete. It's, and we've had tons of kids using the facilities, and everybody that I've spoken with is liking improvements.
Bob, on the mats, I want to make sure I understand, you're saying that the Police Department is going to use one of those mats, that you have now, they've been using one of those mats?
Right, I believe there's six mats total, and the Police Department has one of those mats. Now, I mean, it is a whole set, it says Long Beach when they're all put together, so, but the Police Department has one of those mats right now, and I would like to see...
I believe the plan was just to buy another mat for them, a thinner one.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion and a second, that we approve this with the acknowledgement from the school district, they will buy one mat for us.
I'll make that motion.
I'm recusing myself, but I'm not walking back in that direction.
It's just a mat, what you just... All right, got a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to do a roll call. Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Okay, motion did carry, and note that Mr. Pierce did not vote.
That would be Bennett.
Mm-hmm.
Bennett.
You just called him Mr. Pierce, you just called him Tim Pierce. Yeah, well, I was, I'm trying to get down to the end where I can say what I want to say about the election. So, Building Office Mike is out tonight, Municipal Court, do you have anything?
We're still accepting applications for April 7th for Deputy Court Clerk.
So, the court is accepting applications for Court Clerk?
Deputy Clerk.
Deputy.
Deputy, okay, all right, Deputy Court Clerk. You could reach out to City Hall and get the information, it should be on our website, should be on our, all of our sites. Next, Community Affairs, Courtney?
Yes, I have one thing. I received an email this morning about a grant that just opened up yesterday around noon. It is a T-Mobile Hometown Grant, it is 100% funded, there's no match. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, if there's a project that y'all want to think about, and bring it back to the next meeting that we can apply for, and I can get all the documents ready. Each grant recipient will receive up to $50,000, and I can email y'all this information so you know the guidelines and you know, you can think of somewhere that we can put this grant.
Okay, all right, thank you. We have no derelict properties. Yeah, I'm on, before we adjourn.
Passed up Harbor.
All right, going to City Attorney, we've got some stuff that we need to go in executive session, as you and I talked about earlier, and there's two items that we need to discuss, am I correct?
Yes, so, there's a matter involving the opioid litigation, Long Beach Harbor lease, and also interlocal agreement with the Harrison County Development Commission that we need to discuss.
Okay.
All in executive session.
Motion going executive session.
Did I miss the Harbor? Where'd I? Oh, I did. Hey, I apologize, I did miss you. I'm going to go back to our motion and second to go in there. Did you have anything?
Yes, I was...
I sincerely apologize.
Yeah, no big deal.
All right, we got a motion and second to go in executive session, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back.